9:00 AM on January 4th, 2021. If you would please rise with me and join me in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning. It's January 4th at 9:00 AM, 2021. I would like to welcome our newest Commissioner, John Herzog, to the Board. And it is normally the first order of business of the Board of Commissioners to elect a new Board Chair, Vice Chair, to the Board. So do I have a nomination for Chair? Well, Mr. Chair, does my glasses fog up here? I'll be proud to nominate myself as Chair. Do I have a second?
Flip it on to your tire lapel. And you ask a question usually after there's a second, then there's discussion.
How's that? Can you hear me?
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
Further discussion?
So, you know, being brand-new, the... So there's just a Chairman, or a President, you know, Chairman of the Board, and/or... How do you... What's the title?
It's basically Chair of the Board, Vice Chair, and then the Third Commissioner is no title. It's just S. Commissioner.
So, in the past, do you usually change every year?
Every January, the first meeting of every year is when we do our changes, yes. So the position would be held for one year unless something happens that the Commissioner doesn't want to be Chair anymore, or the Board feels as though that Commissioner should not remain Chair. For whatever reason, the Board can change that.
Okay.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Herzog!
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyce!
Aye.
Chair Pash!
No.
Motion carried two to one.
Alright, with that, we are going to... With our new Chair seated, do you want to adjourn, sir? The meeting is yours.
We're gonna elect Vice Chair, or we're gonna go...
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Yes, do I have a motion for Vice Chair? Thank you, Counsel.
So, motion for Vice Chair. I will nominate John Herzog for the 2020... 2021, excuse me, year, Vice Chairman, Curry County Board of Commissioners.
I'll second that. Further discussion? Well, you're the Board Chair, sir.
I would rather just sit here a year, so... But I'm at the mercy of, you know, not the mercy, but your guys' wish, so I would rather have Crispy Vice Chair, but...
I actually think it'd be good. A Vice Chair is not a demanding position. It's basically if something happens, Commissioner Boyce can't be here, or can't be on the phone to run the meeting, you would just take control of the meeting. Counsel?
About how many times has that happened?
I think once I wasn't here in two years.
Yep, so it's pretty infrequent, just like what Chris Pash said.
Just for the health issue, or something happens, family issue, for some reason they can't make a meeting.
Mr. Herzog, you're a quick learner. We'll be there with you. Said you're a quick learner, so I have no reluctance whatsoever for your ability and capacity there. Just for the record, two years in a row, his first and second year, I nominated, made the motion for Christopher Pash to be the Chair. So I think that's important to note, and also it's been three times that I've been Vice Chair this year, or in the two-year period, I'm sorry, that I have been here to conduct the meeting in your absence. That's all I have there. So, I think we need to get to the amendment, approval of the agenda.
We need to get a vote first. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Roll call, Mr. Jesuit.
And this is a vote for...
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair for Commissioner Herzog.
Correct.
Commissioner Herzog! Vice... Chair Boyce? Commissioner Pash!
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
I need to vote, John.
Oh, did Chair Boyce vote? JJ?
It's okay, we're getting through it here. Good job.
Chair Boyce voted yes, I believe.
I'm voting yes now.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We got two votes under our belt, huh?
Pretty good. Do you want to break the meeting and take a break, or stay where we are, sir?
No, let's keep working. Either Commissioner, or Staff Rickert, or Counsel Huddle, any agenda amendments or changes we need to consider? Mr. Rickert?
I suggest that we move Item 6A after the Liaison Role Assignments at the end of the meeting. It deals with liaison assignments. It makes sense to have it after that discussion.
I agree. I have no problem with that. Anything further, Counsel Huddle?
Nothing from me.
Commissioner Herzog?
No, sir.
Commissioner Pash?
So I have one. It's Agenda Number Five, appoint members of the Tourism Promotion Committee. Excuse me. We have no applications that I'm aware of, and so I'm not sure who we're voting on. And that is the only consent agenda item, so I'm gonna ask the Board, recommend to the Board that we delay this for... Maybe till the next meeting, which I presume is gonna be on January 13th, other than Wednesday, of course. Simple to say, we need applications.
I don't think our next meeting is scheduled for January 13th, is it? I think it's... It would be two weeks from the 6th, so that would be...
That'll be decided later on, too.
That's our discussion. And I have requested January 13th meeting to Mr. Rickert. And I can show you that email if necessary. Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to postpone or table the appointing members of the Tourism Promotion Committee to either the 13th or the 20th, whatever we determine is our next meeting, after Wednesday, the 6th. So if we don't get a motion, Counsel Huddle, then we won't even vote on this today, then? And those applicants will be approved? Little confusing, isn't it?
Well, there would have to be a motion to approve the consent agenda. Did you make a motion to continue the item?
I didn't make a motion. I asked for it to be pulled from the consent agenda, correct?
Okay, if it gets pulled from the consent agenda, then you discuss the item today. You'd need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, and then you could just discuss that item later on today's agenda. And at that time, you could decide whether to appoint, continue, or what have you. But for now, I think the current motion in front of the Board is to take Item 5 off of this consent agenda, and then put it somewhere on this agenda, and then after that, there would be a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Is what I understand where we're at in the meeting.
So looking for a motion?
So moved? Because I have not seen any... I have not seen a, you know, thing about a member. I'd like to see, you know, the members.
Agreed.
Yeah, so...
So we're going to pull this from the consent agenda and put it as an action item for discussion?
That is the request, yes.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
Well, I guess I do have some discussion, because this would be prior to vote, you know, voting on the appointing of the members. We would see a list of the members, and...
That's what we're gonna discuss.
Okay, alright.
And so where do we want to put that?
If I could, just kind of, I know we're in our first meeting. So for new, for Commissioner Herzog, what you have here is the agenda, and what we're doing now is doing amendments to the agenda. If the item, if the agenda were not amended, the consent agenda is usually just voted without any discussion. What Commissioner Boyce has requested is to take this item off of the consent agenda, and then now what he's asking is where would it be? Typically, you know, Commissioner Boyce, it would be at the end of Number 6. Action and discussion items, so it would be probably 6I. And then, the Board then, for Mr. Herzog's information, would just vote to approve an amended agenda. So you wouldn't be voting whether to approve any appointments or continue that item. You would just be voting to take this item from Number 5 and put it at the bottom of Number 6, so you could just talk about it and have this entire discussion of applications, appointments, continuations, et cetera, at a later time in today's meeting.
So we need to vote now to agree on pulling it?
On an amended agenda.
Yes. Roll call, please.
Well, this is not for the final amended agenda, because I have a couple of changes I'd like to make.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had been asked, but never mind. Go ahead.
I thought that was Commissioner Boyce's ask earlier, was about anything further on the prior question. I have two things on here that I'd like to see changed. One is the censure to be removed. The censure's already been done and recorded. I don't know why we need to bring this back up again. It's something that's already been handled by a previous Board, and it's in the books. I mean, this is something that we've already dealt with, so I don't know why we need to bring this up. I've seen all the pages of things that go along with this in the computer, and I just personally think it's not in the Board's best interest to bring this up again. So I'd like to have it removed.
Anybody can ask a question?
You sure can.
So, Counsel, you know, not being here for that censure, is it... Can you kind of give me the status of, I mean, is it over and done with, or still ongoing? Or if something would come up concerning the parks, or whatever, should, can he... Can you just kind of give me, you know, what I'm trying to ask?
I think so. Let me take a look at this. And I apologize, I was sick one day last week when a lot of this was going on, so let me just take a look and see if there's any, anything here. So, in general, and quite honestly, you may need to... If this is an item from Mr. Boyce, you may need to actually hear from him. Essentially, I think there would have to be reasons presented as to why there should be a change of the action, and I'm still trying, my computer here is a little slow, I'm trying to pull this up and see, but let me just see if I can briefly read the AGRS to see if there's any good cause or any determination of... So there are responses, responses, further documentation. You know, I think having Commissioner Boyce get his opportunity to explain why the censure should be lifted or reconsidered, or something, I think it would be easier for me to give an opinion on it at that time. You know, I'll just make an analogy to stuff I'm more familiar with, which is court cases. Sometimes there can be explanations that there were procedural issues. Sometimes there's explanations where there's substantive issues, and those are reasons for reconsidering prior decisions, overturning precedent, what have you. And I just haven't had the time to look at all this, to figure that out. But ultimately, if this is analogous, if a Board decision on a censure, a decision of a, call it an adjudication, for lack of a better word, just analogy, then there are standards for judicial courts to overturn prior decisions. Usually if there's a change in the facts, if there's been some error in the prior decision that can be identified, and there's a few other things. So I think at this point, you would be presented with the question of whether, you know, the nature of the prior censure, and whether there's any identifications of faults or new information that has come to light that would allow the Board to change that. So, just drawing analogies, that's very loose, but I think getting more information prior to deciding, making a decision, and then as far as you're concerned, whether you could participate in the decision, that would be your choice as to whether you had enough information to know how to act on a question presented in front of you. So I think at this point, I don't have enough information, or more than just to talk generalities. You probably don't have enough information unless you really studied the packet, but I think there may be discussion. So I think at this point, it's an open question, but I don't know that there's an absolute prohibition on reconsidering a prior action, is just, again, I'm talking very much generalities here.
To make it easier on everyone, I will draw, and we can discuss it then. The other one I'd like to have removed is the assignment of liaison roles. I think we're all, we have all been, well, Commissioner Boyce and I have had our liaisons, for me for two years anyway, with Commissioner Herzog just coming on. I would like to defer this for 90 days at a minimum. Let's all get comfortable with who we are, get familiar with the departments that you're going to work with, and perhaps start to develop some relationships, and possibly readdress this in about 90 days. So that would be my motion to remove this from the liaison roles, and keep all the current liaisons as they are. We would need to deal with the Border Coast Regional Authority, Airport Authority, which was assigned to Commissioner Gold. And being from Brookings, that may be a very convenient one for you if you're interested in the airport issues, but that can be addressed later in the meeting as well. So that would be my motion to remove H for 90 days and bring it back.
I'd second that.
Moved and seconded. That we delay Item 6... 6E, is it?
H.
Oh, the last one, I'm sorry. 6H. Discussion.
The discussion I would have here is that I, you know, being brand-new, will take the opportunity to get to know what, you know, how it... I don't even know where the bathroom is right now if I left here, so... That would be my only discussion. So that's why I'm in favor, and it could be less than 90 days if we needed to, or if they're, you know, but yeah, so I'm...
For the citizens, my take on that is, we have so much work, and we are dramatically behind. We have major decisions to make. We don't know what's coming at us every day, every week, every month. And any delay is not in the interest of this county and the citizens. So, Mr. Pash?
So you're saying that the current liaisons are derelict in their duties? Are you saying I'm derelict in being an active liaison with my liaison assignments?
I'm gonna keep my personal opinions about your job performance to myself, sir. That's not at all what I was saying. I'm sorry you take it to that level immediately in the early part of this meeting. My emphasis, Mr. Pash, is we have some tremendous work to do, some tremendous odds to overcome.
And what...
So, we have a motion to second. Do you want to change that to 30 days, by chance? Go ahead, sir.
Well, in other words, you're asking, I've seen the new assignment of liaisons that you posted on the website, and basically you're taking the Sheriff's Department, you're taking... Let me see here, real quickly.
Community Development, Economic Development, Public Health, Veteran Services.
I was speaking, sir, please. And you've removed the Road Department completely. It has no liaison anymore.
If I may, Mr. Pash, we have that under discussion, Item 6H.
But all I'm saying is...
There's several that are in question here, to discuss and bring it up to date, and as a Board, decide how we might proceed.
Talking over me, sir. You gave me the floor to talk, please. All I'm trying to say is, I feel like you've said, there's a lot of work here to be done, and there's a lot of things here that are hitting us every day at an enormous speed, and you need to change these liaisons, and I was just asking you if you felt that you needed to change the liaisons because you felt I was derelict, or one of the Commissioners was derelict in taking care of their liaison duties. That's all what my question was.
So here's where we are. For the 2021 year, we have, for example, when it was transferred from me to Mr. Rickert to Mr. Jesuit, we have Local Public Safety Coordinating Council on twice. So that's something that we could, in discussion, just simply visit about and determine what's the best way to go. And I thought that's what the reason is, it was on the agenda, and why I thought it was very important to get done today, or at least make some significant progress. I'm very much opposed to delaying 90 days. I'm not gonna do your job performance publicly, Mr. Chair. Mr. Rickert?
I can. Being new myself, it has been helpful to learn different roles, my different roles, learn a little bit about the people that I'm working with, and it would seem to me that that would be fair, like you said, Commissioner Herzog, in giving you some time to learn your different roles, learn the liaison assignments that were currently assigned to Commissioner Gold. And if you'd like, I can even walk you around to the different departments and help, and introduce you.
You know, forgive me. I don't even know if we're gonna have a Director of Operations within a week, a month, a year. We've had four now in the last three and a half years, and I don't think that's the best interest of the county. I think it's, the people have spoken on that twice by huge margins. They want full-time Commissioners, and they want them working with the Department Heads. I don't want to waste any time. You've seen what's happened in this county the last two years. I do not want to repeat the dysfunction and the incredible spending that has hurt the people of this county. And I'm gonna speak up about it. I think you know that. So, I don't know what your relationship is on the Department Heads. The Road Department was inadvertently left out. I gave Mr. Rickert the best information I could, totally in a preliminary basis. And yeah, I have tremendous interest in law enforcement and emergency services, and so that's for this Board to discuss and determine and decide, so we can get to work. But I am very much opposed to 90-day prolonged confusion, anything. Go ahead, Mr.... Did you have your hand up? I'm sorry. Okay, did you have your hand up?
Oh, sir.
Go ahead, Sheriff.
Just one thing on the liaison list. Emergency Services under me wouldn't be directly under the county as a liaison member, so that needs to be clarified.
So noted.
I've taken Emergency Services back under me, and it's effective today as a Board approval. So it wouldn't be, like I said, a Commissioner, being a liaison to Emergency Services when it's under the Sheriff. That's like telling my jail commander would be under the liaison of the Commissioner, my pro and probation would be under Commissioner. It doesn't work that way. So I just want to clarify that up.
Counsel Huddle?
Thank you, and I had a question on one of these that I don't think I've seen before. I'm looking at the, and I know we're just under the discussion of removing this from this agenda and continuing it for 90 days. I'm trying to understand, under John Herzog, it says taxing districts. I think we have 20 or 30 plus or minus taxing districts in the county? Thank you, and...
Forty-five.
Yeah, so, and I don't know that we've had a, one Commissioner be assigned to all the taxing districts before. It might make sense to have more of a workshop on this. It could be done within 90 days, maybe sooner, and because this seems like it's something, especially with Commissioner Herzog being new, it might be good to just have a explanation in public. Again, I'm kind of out of my lane here. I'm not going in totally legal stuff, but I did have a question as to what was intended legally by having him be the liaison to all the taxing districts. I don't, that would make his list be really big. Taxing, he said.
It'd be very taxing. You know, I don't know.
I think it might make sense to have a, and maybe we could just leave this on the agenda to just talk about it, and maybe the Board at that time could decide what they want to do in the future. Instead of removing it and continuing it today, maybe make that decision when this comes up. It seems like we're getting into a lot more than just an agenda amendment here in the discussion. I'm just trying to figure out how to get us to get the agenda...
If I may, we're getting some work done. We're finding some, this is a rough draft. We're finding some things that need work on. No different, the cities, the ports, the libraries, the schools. Do we want to make those positions important for Commissioners to be involved with and report back to the Board? Commissioner Herzog?
Mr. Chair, I was just gonna say, looking at that bottom of that paper, that's what's happening right now, right? This part?
That's what he's recommending, yes.
This is what the recommendation, or this is?
Both. Well, one is a liaison, the bottom is a...
I thought this was what is going, this is like what Sue was under right now.
Yes. Well, if you look at, there's another page in your packet, and that's what Sue was under, you'll see what she had.
So, we have a motion, and your recommendation, if I understand correctly, Counsel Huddle, is to just leave it on the agenda and discuss as our last item this afternoon, second to last item today. It's only 9:20, so I think we can roll up our sleeves and put some time into this. We heard from the Sheriff, we heard from Commissioner Pash.
Currently in front of the Board is a motion to continue this for 90 days, and the Board would have to decide that, and if that's not the action, then it would be something else, so...
So I'm asking the Board to withdraw that motion.
And discuss it?
It's gonna be substantially later today, yes.
I would remove my second.
Then you have no second.
That's correct. So, did you have any other amendment requests, Mr. Pash?
Well, I think at this point, I'm gonna say no.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved?
I'll second. Any discussion, further discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Jesuit.
Commissioner Pash!
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog!
Aye.
Chair Boyce!
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Public Commies, looks like we have three or four here. Lauren Paulson, please step up to the microphone there. Sometimes you have to adjust those microphones. Before you do, I just want to recognize, we have the Sheriff in the audience, he spoke a minute ago. We also have Assessor Cullen, and we also have Steve Byerlin, Rogue Basin County and Curry Salmon and Trout Restoration Coordinator. Sorry for the delay. Mr. Paulson, veteran, wonderful to have you here.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name's Lauren Paulson. I'm gonna be as brief as I can, because I know you guys have a full agenda. Let me tell you, it's a pleasure to see all of you here, and welcome to the new Commissioner. My name is Lauren Paulson. I'm a senior, I'm a veteran, and I am a past homeless person. A real homeless person. Just like a young man that's before the Chevron Station on Highway 101 this morning. We have before this group and before Curry County a number of issues on housing and on homeless. I have given you a handout that has as the first three pages a rudimentary overview of how open sessions work. I am a Commissioner with the Kuz Curry Public Authority for Housing. There is an impasse there, and I have taken the liberty of suggesting something to you on page... on page four in a memo to you and to the Kuz-Curry Authority. Behind that is another memo on that subject. So, I have made a recommendation to do something about our impasse on homeless, seniors, and housing in Curry and Kuz Bay. Well, guess what? There's two groups there that are in disarray. And I'm here to ask you all to get involved in accordance with my memo of June of last year on open session and changes with the Port Authority in Kuz. Curry County is the stepchild, and it's, nothing is getting done, partially because our Executive Director of this housing authority is in Kuz Bay. Has very little interest in anything going on here. I have asked that her evaluation be looked at again formally, and I ask your help to do that. So, that recommendation is also in this package. So, all of you have this package in front of you. Don't read it now, read it when you get time, and then act on it in accordance with my suggestion. Thank you very much.
Mr. Paulson? Just for one moment. How long you been working in Curry County, house various programs, concepts? General work, how long have you been working?
Four years, two years with the Commission.
In Kuz Bay?
In Kuz.
Kuz-Curry. And you realize you're, first I'll learn it on our new Housing Committee appointment.
I understand that to be so.
And I really appreciate that you applied, and your expertise, I'm sure we'll get a chance to use that down the road. Appreciate what you had to say about the, the Kuz-Curry Housing Authority. And, you know, I, I don't necessarily agree totally that that there's a, that we're the stepchild. However, I do appreciate very much and promoted you to be on that committee as well because I knew you would help keep them in a stray line, and you are. So, just thanks for being here today, driving up in the storm, and stay tuned. We're hoping that our Housing Committee will really get some momentum and some energy and work on the issues that you are very, very concerned about and have been for quite a while. And you're also a Vietnam veteran. Thank you.
I'm in there for the long haul, and I'm totally committed to what the county is pursuing, and Kuz as well. Thank you for your time.
Commissioner Pash?
If I could, Seth Jesuit, please give me a copy. I don't have a copy of that with me. So, if I could get one after the meeting's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you again. Public Comment, David Barnes?
Good morning, David Barnes. Right now, I just want to welcome Mr. Herzog, say congratulations on your election and appointment, and let the good times roll.
Thank you, sir.
You're next on, did you have another one, Mr. Barnes?
Yes, will you get to the topic I prefer?
Why don't you do it now, please?
Okay, this is on a separate topic. This is, I believe it's Agenda Item 6D. It's on parliamentary procedure. I opened the packet, I, I saw the, the, I guess it's a flyer in there. And it brought back such great memories for me. I remember getting that same thing on my sixth grade, sixth grade class trip to Washington, DC. You know, the whole pictogram of what parliamentary procedure is. And it just, it brought back such fond memories for me. But, you know, I, this board, you know, unless things change a lot, even from what I've seen this morning, there's really no point in you doing this. It's a joke, you know? There's no respect amongst discussion between people on this board. Already this morning, I've heard Commissioner Boyce call Commissioner Pash Mister instead of Commissioner numerous times. You know, that, I, I, I think it's great for you to try to do something, but if this is gonna end up being a rules for thee and a rules for me, and you're gonna keep behaving the same way that I've seen over the last few years, and yet try to demand decorum out of us, the citizens, I just think that's wrong. And it's a horrible joke. You know, I just, I'd love to see you possibly look into Robert's Rules of Order. We learned about that in eighth grade. But, you know, I just, I think that parliamentary procedure on this board is just, it ain't gonna happen, and I just think it's a waste of time for you to talk about it. Thank you.
Next, Nancy Su Rose?
Nancy Su Rose, I live in Nassica Beach. I would, my suggestion, Chair Boyce says that there's a lot of work for the county, and there always is. And I would recommend to further that agenda of moving things along is to appoint Elizabeth Negatton as Treasurer. And you may do that according to what I have read of state law. This is my opinion.
Thank you. Next on the agenda. Action items, discussion, Item 6A, appointment to, no, we, did we, are we ready for that now?
For which one?
Did we move it to the end?
Yeah, we moved 6A to the end.
Okay, so we're on 6B, excuse me, 20, 21 meeting schedule. Director Rickert?
Okay, so typically at this time of year is when we set the meeting, meeting and workshop schedule for the rest of the year. I have attached to this item just a preliminary schedule. Commissioner Boyce has, in an email, asked to add the 13th of January on to this, but this is open for discussion at this point. How do we want to proceed with the meetings going forward?
Discussion Board? Yeah, that, the 13th is kind of our ace in the hole with, again, a lot of uncertainties that we're dealing with. We're gonna be later on seeking applications for a Treasurer. And so, I think we're gonna need that time. And a two-week delay between the 6th and the 20th, I don't think is in our best interest. There's too much that can come up, and then it overloads that day on the 20th. Maybe even likely loads it up. And so, and here's, here's the letter, excuse me, the email I sent you, Mr. Rickert, back on November 7th, just trying to give you a little bit of heads up on what I thought the schedule might be best direction to head into. So, that was last meeting that, that I didn't give you a little bit of heads up, or you weren't, it didn't get confirmed. But anyway, I appreciate that. And I'm gonna recommend to the board that we keep that open for right now. That 13th with nine o'clock meeting. I don't think we'll need a workshop on that day. But we've seen the different avenues we went today. And what that, what that means for our workload and our responsibility to the citizens. And my Agenda Writing Clip also says, hey, you know, I can't promise that for February. I would like to get back to the first and third Wednesdays of every month. I just don't think we can, we can be as effective and as productive as we need to be if we don't at least leave the 13th open. And I really don't think we need to spend a lot of time on this. I think it's pretty cut and dried and simple to me. So, bring your work boots would be my recommendation. Is there a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at your, at your list here, Chair Boyce, and I'm seeing you're looking, it looks to me as though you're planning for adding another meeting to every month, so we'd have at least three meetings a month. I think the board's been very productive, getting it done in two meetings a month. We're usually done by 12, 1 o'clock, to make our 2:00 PM workshops if we have them. And we can always add a meeting if you, as the Chair, feel it's necessary. You may feel as though it's necessary in January, as you've stated, and I wouldn't be in disagreement with that, but to plan staff for, it's easier to add a meeting than it is to cancel, I believe. So, to have staff, be staffed up for three meetings a month in advance of knowing that you'll need them, I don't know if that's necessary or not, in my opinion. So, I, I would, I would prefer to see we leave it at two. And like you just said, you want to add one for January, an additional one, because we will have a lot going on this month with the new board change. To leave that, yes. But going forward, perhaps you can add them as we go.
If I may, Commissioner Pash, and I did correct myself, by the way. Did not just call you Mister, so if that offended you, I'm very sorry.
I don't get that offended, sir.
Okay. So, you just said that we have a busy month. Why are we talking so much about this? Why don't we just schedule a meeting and then cancel it, if that's, if that's necessary? I doubt that's gonna happen. We have so much work. How many times do, I mean, is there any doubt in your mind? You just confirm that. So, I'm, I'm looking for a motion to get this moving, please. Go ahead.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you on the meeting. I agree with you on the meeting. All I'm saying is, in the year ARS, you submitted for the entire year
No.
a calendar.
No.
You were drawing that.
I did not submit an ARS.
I'm looking at it, sir.
That is Mr. Rickert's. That's not mine.
Whose ever it is, why are you yelling at me?
Because you, as usual, you accuse me of something that's inaccurate. You need to do a little more homework.
Okay, in the package, there is a calendar for the entire year. All I'm asking is that we do it for, add, add the meeting for January, yes. But I would like to see us keep to our two eating, meetings per month going forward from that. That's all my suggestion was.
Commissioner, I just
Forgive me if I assumed that you did this as a, to, to get some forward-looking on our meetings, and Mr. Rickert did it. Forgive me for that. I don't think that deserves being yelled at, but thank you.
Mr. Rickert, by the way, good job on this. Do you want to, you want to verify what my Agenda Writing Slip was regarding this?
I believe your Agenda Writing Slip had, had some suggestions for this month only. I had put together the calendar for the entire year. That is why I took, took yours out and replaced it with the writing slip I had. I have not added the 13th to it pending the outcome of the decision of the board, which it does sound like we are gonna add the 13th to January, leave the rest of the year as is, which is two, two business meetings, two workshops per month. Am I understanding this correctly?
Can I have that, if you don't mind, what you just, my original correspondence with you? Thank you. So, I think we're on the same page here, are we not? Except, excuse me, Commissioner Herzog?
I was just gonna say, is September, is our three meetings? In September, it looks like.
And see, there, there again, Commissioner, you're, if I could, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Pash.
Thank you, Chair. You're again looking at the same list that I was assuming that it was all submitted as one. So, the first part of that is what Commissioner Boyce submitted, the rest of that is what Director of Operations, Rickert, submitted. So, all, all this is, I guess, is for the January meeting.
Okay.
And that's how I was confused as well.
Okay.
So, did you have anything further?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, excuse me, Council Huddle?
Yeah, I have a question. Maybe it's for Director Rickert. So, Brad, I'm looking at the Agenda Packet. Page one is the AGRS. Page two looks like a meeting schedule, and it's got, you know, whatever you call them, columns and rows and such not. And it shows one, two, at least three meetings in January, four, six, and 20. Two meetings in each, in February, March, et cetera. But then I go down to, and then that seems to end in November. I don't see any meeting scheduled for December. That ends on page, looks like three. And then I see something starting in February on page four, and this shows a meeting almost every week. And, and then, so I'm just trying to figure out what, and then, and then the next page seems to have some locational things, and I'm, I don't, and, and some topics, I guess these are the quarterly reports and such. What is the board asked, being asked to, which of these calendars is the board being asked to adopt today?
I guess I'm not sure what calendar you're looking at.
So, let's do this.
I'm looking at, you don't have a computer, do you?
If I may.
Go ahead.
We've already spent enough time on this. Here's, here's what I'm thinking. Before the finger pointing started, unfortunately, here's what I had submitted to Mr. Rickert that I thought was on the, I thought was on the ARS. I missed it. January's going to be an extremely busy month. This is what I sent to him. We have a lot of ground to make up with the much-divided 2019 and 2020 board compounded by quite a number of uncertainties. We best plan on some long, long committed days for production to the people's, to do the people's work. Needless to say, there are a great number of important issues, critical policy challenges, details to meet and get done. I would prefer to get back on the two full CCC board meetings per month scheduled for February. And hopefully for the remainder of the year. However, due to the uncertain times, another sentence or so that says basically the same, looking for a strong year of recovery. And then I outline the other meetings. So, I think we need to adopt a January schedule that includes January 13th in case we need it, and likely we will. And then we can work on February, that meeting on the 13th, and the rest of the year to clarify this. Commissioner Pash?
I agree with you, sir. All I asked was your forgiveness for misunderstanding, and now it's finger pointing. All I asked was, I saw something that evidently even another Commissioner here misunderstood. So, can you understand the confusion? I'm sure Mr. Rickert was under an unbelievable schedule last week, especially with the holiday and everything in there, to get all these AGRSs out and get them done. And there was some confusion on this one. So, all I asked was for your, I apologize to you and asked for your forgiveness on it. That's all I did, sir. I didn't finger point, so thank you. And I am seconding your motion to have a third meeting in January.
One moment, please? So, we'll spend more time on this for too long, and we'll get this clarified right now. Did you just make a motion, Commissioner Pash?
You made a motion earlier, and I seconded, I just seconded it.
For the 13th?
Yes.
You seconded it. Discussion? Who you got looking over your shoulder there?
Oh, I'm trying to show him how to pull up our meetings on his computer. So, we have set the January schedule.
With the additional general meeting, nine o'clock, January 13th. And not overlooked, January 20th, general meeting.
And 13th has no workshop on it, correct?
That's correct. That's subject to change, but probably not. So, any more discussion? Roll call, Mr. Jesuit?
Commissioner Pash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Aye.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
So, the next one is Item 6C. Whoop, nope.
Do we usually break staff about this time? It might be a good time to do it before going into
We've only been working 50 minutes. Okay.
Our law, you have to.
Ten minutes.
Okay.
Oh, we just do a
It's break time.
Then ten minutes, or do you want to do it now for 10 minutes?
Let's meet everybody back here at 10 o'clock. For now, thank you. The next item on the agenda is Item 6C. Heading of the AR, whoop. The heading of the ARS is Curry County Treasurer Lake Hanscom Resigned Effective on December 30th, 2020. Request for the Curry County Board of Commissioners Send Out An RFA. Request for Applications for Treasurer. Request for applications for treasurer and accompanied by this brief background description. Curry County Board of Commissioners needs to discuss the resignation of Curry County Treasurer-elect Terry Hanscom and begin the process of seeking applications for his replacement. Voices request the board act and review this matter on January fourth, 2021. Applicants will be subject to residency requirements and possible background checks. The board needs to determine the terms of this process as we move forward. Due to the urgent nature of this position, we suspect there will be a limited window to apply. The board will issue a press release with details after the meeting on the fourth. A sample press release was included in this agenda routing slip." I'm not going to read the press release, but I want the board to discuss where we are on this and what our expectations are. I will start off by recommending that we have a ten-day process. Ideally for me would be for the board to conduct interviews on the, it would be the fifteenth of January. The applications would close on the fourteenth, five o'clock in the afternoon. And I think that's where we are. We would need staff to refine, subject to what we agreed to today, the press release and have it go out immediately this afternoon. And we'll put that on Staff Jesuit's desk. That's all I have for now, board. And I do, I'm sorry, I do have a little trouble seeing here, so I didn't mean to ignore anyone. So Commissioner Pash?
First, I would like to take this moment to apologize to Commissioner Herzog for your coming into some of what you're coming into with what's going to be on our agenda for the next few weeks, walking into some decisions that could be in dispute here with the board and having to make decisions with limited knowledge on things. So I, I would like to, if the chair would give me a little bit of latitude, because this is a discussion item, talk about, or if you would like to, in brevity, however you'd like to do it, sir, get Mr. Hanscom up to speed on exactly what happened with Mr. Hanscom's resignation and how that occurred. And then I can make comments after that, or do you want me to do that? I think it's fair that he know exactly what happened.
Well, I think he's, are you reasonably aware, Commissioner Herzog?
No, I didn't, no, we were out of town, so I didn't, no. It's because you, I, I read that it happened on the thirtieth of, yeah, we were, we were in eastern Oregon, so I...
Well, arguably, if you don't mind, can I continue, or you want to?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Pash?
Arguably, I would say that Mr. Her, Mr. Hanscom wanted to vacate the possibility of him being treasurer long before he was elected. He's, he even made statements in the League of Women Voters meetings that the other candidate, if you wanted the most qualified person ready to be treasurer, he made a statement two times during that meeting that she should, that you should vote for her and not him. Also, he had made statements in the, in the last few months that he was considering resignation for health reasons or for some health reasons in his family, and has, he felt as though he may not be qualified as well. He met with our treasurer on a few occasions, and our treasurer has testified here in our board meetings and in a workshop that he relayed to her that he was not qualified. And these are in general words, not quotes. He also relayed to her in one phone conversation that he wanted to resign, that he would not be, he was going to be sworn and then resign immediately after being sworn. So this has led us to this, in my opinion, where we are now. My problem with this is it could have been dealt with. Instead of having to do an AR, AGRS right now and reach out to the public and not find a treasurer for perhaps weeks in the future, along with a problem of our treasurer first saying that she would only be available for a week or two after the, after her term expires, which expired last night at midnight, and then her later coming before the board and saying that after discussing it with her family, and she also told me privately, the absolute longest she will be available is till the thirtieth of this month. If we delay this and wait application process, have that applicant, those interview and then set for...
The next item on the agenda is item six C. Heading of the ARS, whoop. "The heading of the ARS is Curry County Treasurer-elect Hanscom resign effective on December thirtieth, 2020. Request for the Curry County Board of Commissioners send out an RFA. Request for applications for treasurer and accompanied by this brief background description. Curry County Board of Commissioners needs to discuss the resignation of Curry County Treasurer-elect Terry Hanscom and begin the process of seeking applications for his replacement. Voices request the board act and review this matter on January fourth, 2021. Applicants will be subject to residency requirements and possible background checks. The board needs to determine the terms of this process as we move forward. Due to the urgent nature of this position, we suspect there will be a limited window to apply. The board will issue a press release with details after the meeting on the fourth. A sample press release was included in this agenda routing slip." I'm not going to read the press release, but I want the board to discuss where we are on this and what our expectations are. I will start off by recommending that we have a ten-day process. Ideally for me would be for the board to conduct interviews on the, it would be the fifteenth of January. The applications would close on the fourteenth, five o'clock in the afternoon. And I think that's where we are. We would need staff to refine, subject to what we agreed to today, the press release and have it go out immediately this afternoon. And we'll put that on Staff Jesuit's desk. That's all I have for now, board. And I do, I'm sorry, I do have a little trouble seeing here, so I didn't mean to ignore anyone. So Commissioner Pash?
First, I would like to take this moment to apologize to Commissioner Herzog for your coming into some of what you're coming into with what's going to be on our agenda for the next few weeks, walking into some decisions that could be in dispute here with the board and having to make decisions with limited knowledge on things. So I, I would like to, if the chair would give me a little bit of latitude, because this is a discussion item, talk about, or if you would like to, in brevity, however you'd like to do it, sir, get Mr. Hanscom up to speed on exactly what happened with Mr. Hanscom's resignation and how that occurred. And then I can make comments after that, or do you want me to do that? I think it's fair that he know exactly what happened.
Well, I think he's, are you reasonably aware, Commissioner Herzog?
No, I didn't, no, we were out of town, so I didn't, no. It's because you, I, I read that it happened on the thirtieth of, yeah, we were, we were in eastern Oregon, so I...
Well, arguably, if you don't mind, can I continue, or you want to?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Pash?
Arguably, I would say that Mr. Her, Mr. Hanscom wanted to vacate the possibility of him being treasurer long before he was elected. He's, he even made statements in the League of Women Voters meetings that the other candidate, if you wanted the most qualified person ready to be treasurer, he made a statement two times during that meeting that she should, that you should vote for her and not him. Also, he had made statements in the, in the last few months that he was considering resignation for health reasons or for some health reasons in his family, and has, he felt as though he may not be qualified as well. He met with our treasurer on a few occasions, and our treasurer has testified here in our board meetings and in a workshop that he relayed to her that he was not qualified. And these are in general words, not quotes. He also relayed to her in one phone conversation that he wanted to resign, that he would not be, he was going to be sworn and then resign immediately after being sworn. So this has led us to this, in my opinion, where we are now. My problem with this is it could have been dealt with. Instead of having to do an AR, AGRS right now and reach out to the public and not find a treasurer for perhaps weeks in the future, along with a problem of our treasurer first saying that she would only be available for a week or two after the, after her term expires, which expired last night at midnight, and then her later coming before the board and saying that after discussing it with her family, and she also told me privately, the absolute longest she will be available is till the thirtieth of this month. If we delay this and wait until the fourteenth or fifteenth with an application process, and then perhaps have that applicant, those applicants come in, interview, and then set for an emergency meeting or the next meeting to discuss those applicants and, and pick one, we're going to be into the fifteenth to the twentieth of January. The treasurer's position, I'm going to say, I've, in speaking with her, our treasurer, Ms. Crumley, she's guessing four to six weeks to train someone. So if we wait for this long period of time with someone as treasurer, I think we're going to run up against that she's going to leave, and we're going to have a treasurer that's about half-trained for the job. And as you know, I'm sure, being in business, a treasurer's position in a county is maybe the most important position in the county. The other problem we have is that Commissioner Boyce, Chair Boyce, has come before the board and asked the board to keep Debbie Crumley on, on an hourly rate until the end of the month. And I know he talks about saving money for the county, but she's going to be paid twice what her salary is now to keep around in an hourly rate, approximately twice. So in the ORSs, if you look at like ORS two, three, six, three, two, five, we did have, as a board, the right to fill this office prior to Mr. Hans, Mr. Hanscom even resigning. We could have filled it weeks ago. And if he didn't resign, then of course that didn't happen. But at least we could have had someone already in the coffers to take the position and had them, perhaps if they got board approval, being trained. Because if you read ORS two, three, six, point, three, two, five, three, "Accept where an election is required by law if a holder of a public office or a person who receives a certificate of election as a holder of a public office resigns, and the office effective as a future date, the appointing authority, which would be the board, required by law to fill the vacancy in the public office, may begin the process to fill that vacancy and select a successor even prior to the effective date of resignation." Under this section is exactly how it quotes. So we could have moved weeks ago, knowing that Mr. Hanscom was not going to be treasurer or had serious concerns of actually being sworn and taking the oath of office and sitting as treasurer. We could have moved to fill this spot weeks ago. And Commissioner Boyce moved strongly to stop that from happening and don't do anything until we get an answer from Commissioner Hanscom, or I mean, not Treasurer-elect Hanscom. So we are now in a dilemma to fill a treasurer's pot in a county that I believe it's imperative that we have a treasurer immediately. So I, I would say to move this off until the fifteenth, with the black eye the county's already got and how this was handled, would be wasting our time and putting the county funds at risk. I think this is something that needs to happen immediately, if not sooner. How we do that, I don't know. We have, from what I understand, a couple of applications already, and I don't know if this board could appoint one of those applicants until the next election cycle. We have three choices, from what I understand from Salem. We can either have a special election, which would cost this county thirty to fifty thousand dollars in estimate. We can wait and appoint someone and, and appoint them until the next election cycle, which would be two, approximately two years. Or we can appoint them for the entire term of the next treasurer-elect would have been, which is four years. So those would be in my, what I've learned from conversations from Salem, those would be our three choices, at least. That's how I disseminated that information. So that's what I think is, before the board, Mr. Chair, that we not delay this, and I'd like to continue this conversation, maybe hear from Commissioner Herzog on this and, and you, Mr. Chair, further. But this is something that should have been dealt with, per the ORSs, weeks ago. I pushed so hard to get this done. You had citizens that came in and pushed to get this done and did nothing. And now we are left without a treasurer, and we will have no treasurer to train a new appointed treasurer and have them to be ready to sit in the seat.
Do you have any questions now?
Okay, so...
You're going to need to go first?
No, I was just thinking, so, you know, I, I hear everything you're saying, but, you know, it's done. So I mean, we, we can't go back, right? So we got to go forward in a, in a, in a, in the right way. And so I know we have a county clerk that is very good at what she does as far as, you know, how to, I'd like to, I actually like to hear her recommendation on how to maybe move forward in this, just in the filling of that position. I think you're right, Chris, that we need to go as quick as we can. But I, you know, it was Terry's decision whether he did it on the thirtieth of December or today. I think we'd still be in the, you know, I, you know. But like I said just a second ago, we can't go back. We, we got to go from January fourth, we got to move forward. So the, a question on the Ms. Mrs. Crumley, who is the treasurer right now. She is willing to stay for one month only, even at a higher... So you, you did mention that she would stay at, at twice her salary? Just till, just till the end of January, or is that something like a consulting fee?
Let's come back, can we come back to that, Commissioner?
Can I answer his question?
No, I didn't mean to overlook you a moment ago. So did you want to talk, and then I'll come back to you, Commissioner, and I'll have something to say there.
I had one thing to add, that Mrs. Crumley is restricted to eighty hours for the month. So without, without having a treasurer here right now, some of that time is going to be devoted to keeping the county running as, as far as the treasurer's position goes, and which means there'll be less time for, for training the, the further we get on in the month.
Well, is there a, a legal, is there a legal, legal aspect at this that we have X amount of time to, to put out a, you know, a press, not a press release, but a, you know?
We are going to put out a press release.
Press release, but I mean, as far in the application, you have, you know, do we have, as a county, do we have to say, this has to, this can go out for two weeks, or is there, can we say, in five days, we're going to, we're going to pick, get your applications in? I mean...
There's, there's no minimum amount of time the advertisements have to be out. It's up to the board. While I, there, there was a speaker slip turned in, I'd like to pass it to the chair.
Okay, I'll be, whoop, you sound like we tore it. I'm sorry. We'll get to the public comment in just a moment here. I'd like to read something that I didn't get until, I think, New Year's Day or evening, or maybe it was the thirtieth. I had somebody give me a bad time that I take my mask off too, too roughly, and so it might spread things, and I'm, I'm sorry. I'm trying to be as accommodating and as agreeable as possible. Here's what, and this is a hard feelings that I think have been created in this, in this whole, whole thing that I'm very sorry for with the reputation that Terry Hanscom has into degree. It's been tainted by members of this board. I just really feel bad about that. But he sent this to the Board of Commissioners on the twenty-second. And again, I didn't get it till the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth, even the thirty-first. It's addressed to John Jesuit. Please provide the commissioners and county commissioners with a copy of this email. Thank you, Terry C. Hanscom, to the Curry County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Terry C. Hanscom, to the Creek County Board of Commissioners. We shut that door, please. I've read the order the Board of Commissioners emailed to me dated 17 December 2020. Some observations about the order. First, it has no order number. Second, it is only signed by one commissioner, Sue Gold. Commissioner Pash did not sign, and Commissioner Boyce wrote opposed. I can only conclude that the order is meaningless. I have also been assured by the Oregon Secretary of State's office that what I remembered as commissioner was correct, and that is that the Board of Commissioners have no authority to order any elected official, in my case, an elected official-elect, to appear before them. I therefore decline their order to appear before them at this time. In another matter, I've been informed that an order of the Board of Commissioners appointing me Deputy Creek County Treasurer from late November exists. Have never been shown a copy of the order, I can only go on the assumption that it does exist. I hereby resign from the position of Deputy Creek County Treasurer effective this date, 22 December 2020. One more issue. I was dismayed to learn from the current treasurer that there has not been a deputy treasurer for about two years. This means that she has had no trained backup, should she need to be gone for any reason. As I understand it, the majority of the Creek County Budget Committee, which includes the three commissioners, have not seen fit to properly staff the treasurer's office with qualified backup. I find this very disturbing. As a treasurer's office is one of, if not the most important offices, we seem to all agree on that, in county government, as it is handle all funds coming into passing through the county to other taxing districts, I strongly recommend the Board of Commissioner, plural, excuse me, negotiate at once a consulting contract with the retiring treasurer to ensure, ensure a proper transition with the next treasurer. And I didn't see this skin and toe laden, that's exactly what we did with Commissioner, excuse me, Treasurer Crumley, whose term sadly expired last night at 11:59. Okay? And so she agreed to work, thank goodness. A famous chair. Hang in, Mr. Byerly. And so we're talking about a higher rate of salary, the money that goes out of this place in a given time, not to mention, I'm here full-time, and I'm going to take my lumps for Mr. Hanscom's challenge, that we let this get by without a deputy treasurer. Should not have happened. Having said that, I think we're in a confirming, Commissioner Pash, you just said we have two applications in already, we don't know who's out there. We're not going to tell the voters to take whomever is left. We're in a 10-day process that I recommended in my opening remarks regarding this issue, and I think we're in very good shape, and I think we'll land on our feet. I think the, the applicants that are likely to apply are going to come to the rescue. A lot of, a lot of CPA, treasurer, finance people, they don't like to go into an election. So, you know, I, I think that if we get somebody that rolls up their sleeves and jumps in, it's not if, I'm convinced it will happen, and I'm anxious to do those interviews on the 15th. Back to the salary of the $75 an hour, that is a total bargain. There's no employment cost with that. So it's about a wash, okay? It's about a wash. So to keep saying, I think, that it's, you know, squandered money, I have no doubt, Commissioner Pash, that you believe that this board is the board that should be making that choice. Not a board, you keep referring to two weeks, it was the 17th. And if he would have been handled a little bit different, I think he might still be here. But this board didn't treat him right, and that really is concerning to me. In fact, it's disturbing, and somebody with his character and all the assumptions, all the public comments have been made, really, I think tragic. So, we have a process, that's what we're discussing today. I would like to request this board refine this press release. Let's see what happens. Let's see who applies. I think we'll be pleasantly surprised. Did you have something else? Okay, Commissioner Pash?
I, my question to you would be, who's going to be the treasurer on February 1st? And how will that treasurer be able to operate as treasurer without being properly trained to be a county government treasurer?
You know, I think, you can come on up, Sessor Cohen, if you would, please. You know, we have some counties that are, care very much, neighboring counties care very much about Creek County, and they will, they will help any way they can. It's not an alarming thing, it's not the ship is sinking, it's simply a task that we need to do with responsible effort, and, and we're headed that direction. When we found out that we were potentially exposed without a treasurer on January 4th, we, I immediately went to the board and said, hey, we, we need to, we need to go from Mrs. Crumley being a treasurer to a deputy treasurer. So I think we're in good shape. No panic here. Mr. Cohen, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jim Cohen, Creek County Assessor, and really, you just, you just took the words out of my, my mouth, Chair Boyce. I've actually had, as county assessor, we have an Oregon Assessors Association, and it's not uncommon to get a brand-new assessor in there that's never worked in an assessor's office before. And, and the association pulls together, they've even got manuals on, on information that the new assessors need to know, and, and we take them through a training period, try and help them out as much as possible. I know one of the past presidents of the State Treasurers Association, and I spoke to her about this because, you know, I could see that, I mean, while Creek County is not in an ideal situation, I just wanted to know whether or not they, they had similar backup. And truly, this situation is not new to county treasurers. They often have people that are elected that have never worked in a treasurer's office before. And they, they get together and they do what they can to pull them through. I mean, ideally, we'd have the current treasurer around for a longer period of time, so she could work with whomever you select for the new treasurer, to show them the keystrokes. But it sounds like many of the keystrokes are going to be changed in any way, what with the county's new, what do you call your new county?
Geo-Gov.
Geo-Gov.
Or Open-Gov, sorry.
So, at least moving forward, there's going to be some things that our current treasurer is not familiar with. I don't know how much training she's had on that yet. So, it may not be as much of a, an emergency or dire situation as all that. I think we can get there from here.
Mr. Cohen, if I could?
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Were you done?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, you just said a word that is very concerning to me, may not be as dire as we say, but there is a part of you that thinks it could be, isn't there?
There's nothing certain in this world, Commissioner Pash, you know that as well as I do.
Well, I just wanted to ask another question, if I could, in regards to Mr. Hanscom, because he, in conversation with me, relayed to me that he felt you were putting a lot of pressure on him to not resign until the 1st of, or until actually this morning.
Mr. Pash, are we going to hash over this?
I don't mind taking that question.
Okay.
Because I.
Do I not have a right as a, as a county commissioner, an elected official?
You're finger pointing, and I wish you would just.
I'm not finger pointing, I'm asking him a question.
Making accusations that are.
Don't tell me what I'm making.
Third-party.
Don't tell me what I'm making. He said it to me directly in conversation, that Jim was putting pressure on him to not do anything until January 4th. So all I'm trying to say is, I'm asking Mr. Cohen, is, did he make that up, or is that a fact? Did you converse with him about his resignation and possibly when and how to do it?
I will tell you that yes, I, I had a conversation with Commissioner Hanscom after I heard you relate your conversation with him, and he said to me that he didn't say those words to you, the way, the way you characterized them. Now, I did talk to Commissioner Hanscom after he expressed some concerns about carrying on with his office, and yes, absolutely, I expressed some concerns about having the then Board of Commissioners making the choice for the new county commissioner, or county treasurer position. And it, it appears to me that that concern was justified, inasmuch as it appears that you were looking to appoint yourself county treasurer.
Never.
So how ethical would have that been?
Never said I wanted to appoint myself as county treasurer. I said, in an emergency, in an emergency, if we couldn't find a treasurer, I would step down as county commissioner and become the treasurer, or do it on a temporary basis until one was found, because I probably had more financial experience than anyone else in the room. That's all I said. I never said I wanted to be treasurer, I said I would do it if it was necessary, temporary or, or permanent. Never said I wanted to be treasurer.
Well, and you said some things about former Commissioners Hanscom's conversation with you that also don't bear out to be true.
I will say, and I will say this, and you can give me a lie detector test, he told me that Jim and others were putting pressure on him to not resign until he was sworn, and I will take a lie detector test to that. If you'd like me to, I will sit for one, sir. I worry more about what he thinks of me up there than what you think of me here, sir. I won't lie in this, under testimony and oath, something that I've got to face him for later. I won't do it.
So.
I have a higher power I answer to.
We, we understand, we understand, and you reference that quite often. Commissioner Pash, several times, you've said that you would be glad to be treasurer. You were seeking that position. I think with.
You're putting words in my mouth. I never said the word seeking. Don't put words in my mouth.
We can go, okay, fair enough, fair enough. What I want to communicate to the citizens here, that would be highly unethical, and with your financial background, that $30 million needs to be tremendously guarded from you. And I.
Like giving it to the Chinese for somebody you didn't even know? That found out they were illegal?
You are next, sir, Mr. Counsel.
Well, I just, we, we have an item on the process of replacing the treasurer, and I know this conversation was to get Commissioner Herzog perhaps up to speed on the current situation. Commissioner Herzog, do you need any more information in order to, of the background in order to, to discuss the next steps going forward? So, I think, if we can, just talk about the replacement concept.
I'm going to welcome Clerk Renee Cohen, come up to the podium, if you would, please.
Thank you. I, I haven't had a chance to catch the whole meeting, but I think I've heard a couple, Renee Cohen, county clerk for the record.
Thank you.
A couple of comments about the election process, so I'm here to answer any questions about a vacancy in office and what the procedure and the laws are. I just got the phone with Secretary of State's office, and I spoke with everyone, I believe, in that office, who has the history and the knowledge on how an appointment and a vacancy works. So I'm, I'm not sure what I heard, but if we have a vacancy for an elected position, that vacancy then is, as long as we have a resignation, the resignation shall be filed with the clerk, I'm not sure, I haven't seen it yet. And then the resignation process begins after the third day of the date that you receive that resignation, third business day, I believe.
So Clerk Cohen, that would be the day, I believe.
I, I haven't seen anything.
Okay.
I haven't got to my emails, I've been out of the office last week, so I haven't caught up with, with, with my emails. So I think what I heard, I want to make it clear, that the position, the treasurer's position is to go on, onto an election where the voters are going to vote for, for this position. So the commissioners will fill by appointment until the next applicable election, which is going to be May of 2022, and then that appointment is only up until that election, so it'll only be less than two years, and then on that ballot, that, that treasurer position would be elected to a four-year term. So I just wanted to, I wanted to.
Could be. No?
No, not could be. That the election will be, so when, so when you make your appointment, it's going, only up until the next applicable election, and that's state law, and I've confirmed that with the Secretary of State's office, the Elections Division. And then that position, when it goes on the ballot, will be for a four-year term.
Okay, I got you. Clerk Cohen, stay there if you don't mind, please. Thank you for adjusting the microphone. I have a quick question for you. When you said you spoke to different people in the Secretary of State's office, there was no ambiguity or any confusion with you on a kind of a unified response to your questions within the Secretary of State's office?
We've, we've done many appointments throughout the decades, and it's the same process we've been using. Whether it's been appointment to sheriff's position, whether it's appointment to the treasurer's position, whether it's appointment to the surveyor, so this is just processes that we've already used for decades.
Do you think we should be panicked?
I'm just here to talk about the process.
Okay, Counsel Huddle, please.
So I just wanted, one of the items, if, if the board so says on the, the press release would say how long this appointment term would run for, and what I'm understanding you saying is that the expiration of this appointment would be due to a May election in 2022.
Correct.
So then, I wanted to follow up with that. You said at that election, it would be a four-year term, but, but then, are you telling me then that the county treasurer would be off-cycle of all the other general elections?
Correct, and that happens, that's something that happens, depending on when the vacancies occur.
Okay, all right. But, but regardless, and then, so for now, the most they could appoint someone would be to May 22nd.
Correct, so that the people have.
All right.
It needs to be.
Do you have the statute on that?
And an AG ruling, and.
AG ruling?
This is, this is not new territory.
Of course.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Pash?
Clerk Cohen, I'm just wondering, is that for the primary in May, or does that, and then go on the November ballot?
Correct. Same, same process.
That's what I wanted to make sure of, is that if, in May, it would be the, someone would be nominated in the primaries, and then they would get a general vote.
That would depend on who all, it depends on, these are constitutional offices, and the clerk, the sheriff, and the treasurer operate a little differently, so it depends on who files, how many are filing, so that's to be determined.
Right, and that's what I thought, is it would be the, the normal, it would go on to the normal general election if you get more than two people and no 50%.
The Constitution says those positions have to be elected in the November, but you would first go through the primary to get to the November. And I, anybody has any questions about the process? I appreciate if you'd contact me, I've not been contacted by the board regarding any of this matter, so I would appreciate it if you would kind of keep me up to.
There's an exception to that? You did verify with me by telephone on the April 20th, excuse me.
The board, the official, the official board has not been, I have not had any.
But you've been accessible, which I appreciated, very helpful, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on call all the time, I've got my cellphone with me.
Okay.
Don't walk away yet, because I got a question for Renee.
Go ahead, Commissioner Herzog.
Timing-wise, do you have a preference or a recommendation? So right now, Commissioner Boyce is saying, was it two weeks?
Ten days would be, the application would close on Thursday, January 14th, assuming we get agreement, consensus today.
You know, that's up to, the board has precedent, you can take a look at some of your notices that you've done in the past, and what timeline that you've given based on other appointments that we've, that you've needed to fill up based on vacancies that you've had. You know, I will say with the elected positions, we are elected, we are not employees, I know your processes can, can be, can be different, and I know that through the transition process of one elected official versus a new elected official, there's not always the luxury of having somebody sit down next to you and learn what you do for a couple of weeks. You know, I'm not sure how that would be if a newly-elected commissioner wanted to sit down with Commissioner Pash after they were elected for a couple of weeks or a month to figure out how it goes. You just kind of have to hit the ground running as an elected, and you're just going to have to know what you're doing.
But they won't, they will be appointed not elected?
You're appointing them to an elected position, so they are elected.
They're elected, okay.
They, they have the right of any other, of all, of an elected.
All right.
And that's just from my years of experience, and hopefully, we can move forward in, in a process that we've used for decades.
So deep breath? Time just to contemplate. Counsel Huddle, do you have anything else?
No, if, if I wanted to follow up, I guess, with the clerk then, and it seemed like Commissioner Herzog, clarification was that this person would have the rights of electeds. In other words, once this appointment is made, you could not unappoint this person, it would only be, is that correct then? For instance, there would have to be some statutory basis for removal, just as the board can't unappoint the clerk or unappoint.
Right, the statute's clear on what defines what causes a vacancy.
They would, okay, so that's just some clarification as well for your appointment decision. This is not a person, for instance, myself you can remove, you know, any of these other people you can remove, but this would have a status of an elected official, so you could not then, if you decided, oh, we don't want that person, you couldn't remove them. So, there's some. So, there's some, uh, you know, finality, or some limited finality to this decision.
So, anything else? Any other questions? Um, I'm gonna open up to the public here now, because I think this is a very important, uh, issue, just needless to say. Thank you, Clerk Cullen. So, we're gonna go to, um, David Barnes, please.
Good morning, David Barnes. Um, I am a finance professional, I've been so for years. Um, I've, I've trained and learned over a dozen different financial software packages over time. I've mastered many of them, you know, in, in an amount of time, and I, while I have the utmost respect for your assessor, Cullen, I cannot strongly enough urge you to, that this is an emergency, this is a hair-on-fire emergency. You have forty-three special districts, you have numerous contracts, you have other obligations that the treasurer's office must, on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. For you to wait until January fif- fourteenth to close the, um, to close the application process, start your, um, interviews the following week on the eighteenth, which is a holiday, if you hire somebody, the best chance you have of hiring somebody is to start on probably January the twenty-fifth, which will give them five days, ten hours total training time, to be in charge of all of the finances of Curry County. That is incredibly unfair to that person, it's unfair to Ms. Crumley that she does not have a replacement lined up who she is actively training, so that she can feel good about leaving her job, that she has worked for years now, knowing that there is someone in there who can do her job when she leaves. Um, I would ask that you expedite this process. If you're going to do this, put out an RFA today, take applications until Friday, and make a deci- have interviews on Monday and make a decision and get somebody put in that office. You're cutting this way, way, way close here, and, you know, when you have schools that don't get their money, when you have special districts that don't get their money, on the first of February, whatever date it is that they get their distributions, you're gonna have a lot of people calling here and a lot of people upset. Somebody needs to know how to do that come February the first, and I just, I would really hope you would expedite the matter and not take, you don't have all the time in the world. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public that would want to comment?
Real quick, it's been my experience too, when, when I go to hire somebody, um, I give them a, a conditional offer, and it's usually two weeks before, because they have to give a, a letter of resignation to their employer, and usually they set two weeks and, you know, turn around. So, you're looking at all of January to get somebody hired, probably the end of January, if that.
Anyone else? Nancy Sue Rose, please.
Nancy Sue Rose, I again suggest that you hire Neketan, she is qualified, Hanscom even, as we are reminded, Hanscom even said in the, um, League of Women Voters Forum to hire her, because she is the one who is qualified, she ran for the position, she was, she, um, started running for the position very early, and she has shown that she is capable. Thank you.
Thank you. So, board, um, this is a small county, I think the word's out, uh, subject to, uh, Mr. Barnes', um, recommendation. Uh, if we, as we look at a calendar here, um, and on the assumption we're able to come to agreement on, for lack of a better term, refining or even perfecting our press release, um, I mean, I come into the meeting today pretty convinced that we would be in agreement to send this out this afternoon, which is the fourth, um, you know, I got it on the agenda the second I heard, um, from, uh, regarding Mr. Herzog, excuse me, goodness, Mr. Hanscom's decision, and so, if we, this is the fourth, so if we went Monday, the, uh, the eleventh, or even Thursday, the tenth, um, I don't, Counsel Huddle, there would be no legal minimum days, I would assume, to have these applications out? Or notice to the public?
It's board discretion.
So, can we go six-day notice? We could, uh, we could close it on Thursday, the fourteenth, uh, excuse me, the fourth, seventh?
How about this Friday?
Eight? Let's see, what is the, today's the fourth?
Well, the, the issue is-
Four days makes me a little nervous.
Well, the issue there is, you issue a press release, there's a publication lag, they need to have the information in a certain amount of time in order to publish, um-
Just to point out, if you were to make the, if you were to close it on Friday, you could have interviews on Monday and appoint in your meeting next week.
And, and again, I don't, you know, if you put it out in a press release, I think one of the papers only gets printed on Friday, I think they're Wednesday, Friday prints, you know, I deal with them on a infrequent basis, but I know they have publication dates. Um, and there's, I, I understand the urgency, absolutely, but there's also, again, some degree of finality on this decision, and, um, you know, you may want to actually leave it, leave it open, and, you know, in case there's other applicants who, again, I, I don't know, it's, it's a question, but, uh, really, it's all up to the board discretion to how, how, what your deadline is, when you do your interviews, when you do your replacement, and keeping in mind the needs of the county.
I'm gonna recommend, did you have something?
I do.
Commissioner Herzog?
So, I, I still, I hate to bring this back up, but, so, she is definitely gone on the end of January, she will not stay for extra.
I have, I have confidence, um, that if we do our job and find that person, that she'd be willing to stay a little bit longer. Um, she cares, cares very much about this county, so I think your question is very good. Uh, I can't speak for her, obviously, but, uh, I would go in with more optimism than pessimism on that. Uh, Commissioner Pash?
Commissioner Herzog, in conversation with her last Tuesday or Wednesday, I'm not sure exactly what day it was, I learned from that conversation that she told me that she was, um, originally intending to only stay a maximum of two weeks, and she said, the thirtieth of January is the absolute, no matter what, walk-out-the-door date, and that's what she told me. Of course, I've been told that I don't say things as I describe, so you may want to go ask her, uh, the facts, but that's what she told me.
So, who, who was the treasurer prior to Mrs. Crumley?
Uh, goes back to Izzy Brock, uh, or even, uh, wow, back to-
Do we have anybody that-
We're, um, I, I think where we need to be focused right now, in my view, hang on, Sheriff B. right there, um, is perfecting this press release and figuring out if we can do a four-day, six-day, what timeframe would be fair to the public. Initially going in, I thought ten days would be minimum, uh, but I've got a different perspective on that now, and I, I see that, uh, we don't have legal concerns there for properly notifying the public. Uh, the word's already out, so I'm not, uh, although, Counsel Huddle, you mentioned the paper, uh, cycle there, that, that's a big one. Uh, Sheriff, go ahead.
Uh, real quick, I did have a conversation with Debbie, uh, in her office last Friday, and I was hoping to maybe persuade her to stay a little longer, but she said absolutely not. Her husband says there's no way that she will be staying any past January, so she was pretty, pretty adamant that she wasn't gonna stay.
Okay.
Let's do this, and let's, um, I'm gonna remain faithful that she might change her mind, uh, this has been a very stressful thing for her too, unfortunately, and I'm, if I had any part in that, I, which I don't think I did, I, I feel really sincerely bad about that. So, let's close the applications, uh, five o'clock Thursday, um, no, three o'clock Thursday, the seventh, uh, that'll give us two hours to set up interviews for Friday, um, the, uh, yeah, do I have the dates right there, the sixth, seventh? No, seventh. Excuse me, we would close at three o'clock on the eighth, is that a Thursday?
It's a Friday.
Friday.
So, on the seventh, we'll close at three o'clock, we'll have interviews on Friday the eighth. That's, I'm not saying that's what we're doing, I'm presenting that to the board as a hopeful option and agreeable, uh, approach.
That's, that's pretty quick, and I like it.
Okay. Go, go ahead, Counsel Huddle, then, we need to talk about the press release.
Sure, so, board interviews on the eighth would be a, a special meeting, so the board would have to, you know, do me, what? Yeah, okay, just making sure.
So, the idea is to do the interviews on the eighth, not set them on the eighth?
Friday, the eighth, yep. Staff Jesuit, are you okay, uh, in comprehending that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Would the appointment be on the eighth?
Uh, I would assume you'd go into executive session immediately following the interviews.
Oh, the interviews could be, I think, done in executive session. Um, anyway, I'll just ask any question, that's all.
Assessor Cullen, please come up to the microphone.
Yeah, we'll figure it out, yeah. The time as well.
Jim Cullen, County Assessor, I don't know whether or not part of the process that you'd want to consider would be background checks, uh, but I think it's certainly permissible in this, certainly after you've, you've appointed somebody to be the treasurer, as we've heard, they, they have the same rights and responsibilities as other elected officials, but in this process, it, especially, in as much as you're having somebody work with the county's investments, um, a background check seems advi- advisable. And that'll take a couple extra days, but likely it could be done by your next scheduled commissioners' meeting on the thirteenth.
Thank you, and yes, that, that was part of my original submission to the board that I gave to, uh, Mr. Rickert, um, and so, um, I mean, that's a must for me, because this is our reputation, it's on the line, so we have to really make sure we're doing our homework and appointing the best possible person we can find, and be, be aggressive about that. Commissioner Herzog?
Just wondering, does anybody know how long it takes to do a background check? Because I know in my previous job for housing, I could do it, you know, in fifteen, twenty minutes, and it went, but that was, you know, um, that's, that's credit, that's everything, so I don't know, you know, for employment, if that's a, a longer process, or, and who does those? Brett, do you know?
HR would do them.
HR?
We would, we would do the hire, uh, and then, subject to, uh, passing the background check.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Rickert?
And typically, it seems to take a few days, two, two or three days, um, sometimes longer though.
Sheriff?
Just, on that topic, it takes us about a week, because of, uh, all the people that, you know, we have to talk to, um, the background itself is, is pretty extensive when it comes to our, our requirements, so, it's probably different from what the county requires, but we do a very extensive background, and it takes about a week, time it gets it all put together.
Uh, stay up there, Sheriff, if you don't mind, I'm used to raising my hand. Um, how do we run that through your system?
We don't.
No way it can happen?
No.
But the extensive part that you do-
We can't do a, we do a criminal history check on ours, but it has to be, uh, we have to be authorized to do so, and it's employment within the sheriff's office for certified positions. Um, we can do some minor things, but, uh, I have a detective that can do that, but not any criminal history checks.
Would you be willing to help us on that? If we had, assuming we have two or three applicants?
Uh-
Because we need all the information we can get, this is-
Well, like I said, it's, it's, I don't know if I really want to get stuck in the middle of that, um-
But you want a treasurer that is absolutely squeaky-clean, I assume.
Well, they need to be clean. I'll guarantee you that for what we do. Um, I don't want to get into a situation where my detectives are now investigating somebody for fraud or embezzlement or something like that, so-
Well, it's a small county, so we might lean on you a little bit, and you can say yes or no.
Well, at this point, I, I really don't want to get involved in that portion, because we've never done it before.
I think any applicants need to know that we're, we're pretty serious about this, that is just my view. Mr. Rickert?
HR does have a, um, background check process that they, or a company that they use, um, same, same company that I was put through, um, I'm, I'm pretty sure they have, um, some different levels that we can set, um, to be more extensive or less extensive, so, without using the sheriff's system, I, I think we can accomplish a, a good, meaningful background check that, that will reveal the information we're looking for.
Very helpful, thank you. Mr. Herzog?
Question for John, um, so, is, in your history, have you hired somebody and put them on the road prior to that end of that, you know, um, what am I trying to say?
The background process?
Yeah.
No. We, we've given conditional offers to people, but it's contingent on the completing a background check, drug, drug tests, and the whole works.
They'd never be in the position?
No.
So, we couldn't, we couldn't either?
Well, you, you get us a lot different, because they got on the training for a while first, and you're still gonna have your normal treasure for a period of time after, so-
So, that wouldn't, yeah, that we wouldn't lose those days then, right? Okay, thank you, sir.
So, do we have enough to get done here? Are you okay, Counsel Huddle?
Yeah, you're just working on the deadlines, is that correct, and the schedule, or?
I believe, but I'm not sure, we had a consensus on that.
Okay, what, I mean, JJ, and, uh, we're gonna work on the press release on the, the date of the application deadline, and the inter- and the interview date and time and place?
The press release will, uh, will, the radio stations will, will, um, pub- broadcast it, the newspapers, they, uh, publish on Friday, so if we're interviewing on Thursday, or we're, we're closing it on Thursday, it's not gonna work for the newspapers, so-
And that's a really good point, um-
But Huddle said, I'm sorry, that handsome Mr. John Huddle said that we, that the board doesn't have to have a, any kind of timeframe.
I wonder if we can't, can we do the interviews on Monday? Be hard to schedule them, we'd have to, if, if the pilot comes out on Friday, the eighth, and we get applications, uh, you know, make it noon or one, something like that, on, on the eighth, and then set up the interviews on Monday, uh, which would be the, uh, the eleventh, right? I don't think we want to skip the pilot.
Yeah.
So, I think we might, I think you might have just caught something there, uh, both you and Counsel Huddle, Staff Jesuit. Discussion on that? Agreement?
Well, did, did you already agree you're gonna have a meeting on the thirteenth?
No.
Oh, that's-
Oh, excuse me, we are having a general meeting on the thirteenth, or we're gonna discuss that, I think. I don't think we actually determined that yet.
Well, could you, yeah, that's right, we, I'm not sure where we went on that.
So, um, that's coming up on the agenda.
The interviews and the appointment the same day? I mean, I'm just wondering, on the thirteenth?
I don't mind having an extra meeting for something this important, I mean, we're, we're here to work, so that's, that's all I'd mind.
That would give you the time to at least have the ad run on Friday.
So, close it on one o'clock Friday, no?
I'd, I'd close it, I'd have the ad run Friday. I'm sorry, I'm a little out of my realm here, but I'm just trying to help move this thing along. The board could consider, if you're gonna have the newspaper advertisement, it publishes Friday, um, then you could close the applications five PM Monday, and then have your interviews and appointments, uh, two days after that on, on Thursday, or on Wednesday, excuse me.
I follow what you're saying, but that's two days we lose, so, um, make it Friday, five o'clock, have a special meeting on Monday, ten o'clock in the morning, or you could make it two o'clock in the afternoon, and, uh, presumably, the applications would be in by Monday, and we'll, we'll gain those two days. That would be my preference, folks. Commissioner Pash?
I know when I get my newspaper, uh, the Friday publication is not delivered to my newsbox until Saturday morning.
Well, what I just recommended would take care of that, then. Oh, it wouldn't because of Friday?
No, it wouldn't.
Then we could make it, uh, excuse me, we could make it ten o'clock, um, Monday morning, and, uh, set up interviews, uh, Tuesday afternoon, if somebody wants the job, they'll make a way to get here, I would think. So, Monday afternoon, application and interviews, hopefully, we're gonna have a dozen. Commissioner Pash?
I would suggest also that the press release, that expiration time and date be in big, bold letters.
I would suggest also that the press release, that expiration time and date be in big, bold letters so that everyone knows that you might be reading this today, but it is expiring on Monday or whatever date you choose so that they're not thinking they have a week to go and do this.
I'm going to read the press release and I want the board or council or Director Rickert to feel like interrupt me at any point or just make notes with something you're uncomfortable with and we'll find where it is. I've made some other notes, but I think we basically covered that already today. For immediate publication, the Board of Curry County Commissioners is seeking qualified applicants for the vacant position of Curry County Treasurer. Must be able to fulfill the duties of County Treasurer in ORS Chapter 208. Further duties and desired qualifications may include, but are not limited to, approves accounts payable, claims of county departments responsible for safekeeping of county funds, oversees investments of county funds, performs accounting duties requiring knowledge of an extensive body of accounting. Whoop, scrolled up too far. Procedures and techniques to work with a total accounting system responsible for reviewing work from other departments of sources and verifying its accuracy. Maintain the control records for all transactions affecting the fund balances in all county funds, trusts, suspends, and taxing district accounts. Assure accurate recording, balancing and classification of all financial transactions to proper accounts in accordance with county procedures and state regulations. Verify the amounts of money deposited by various county departments and taxing districts received. Same, whoever wrote this did good. Crediting the proper funded budget item coordinate, confer with and resolve problems with data processing department relating to technical and programming aspects of accounting functions, participate in the design of reports, provide, almost halfway guys, difficult and involve balances, verifications, reconciliations, and audit reports as required. Assure completeness and accuracy of records and summaries of financial transactions and investments in compliance with government accounting standards. Boards coordinate and, and it gives a number. Coordinate and cooperate with outside auditors as required during specific period audits of the county's financial records. Create, develop, and maintain multiple complex computer spreadsheets for functions which are not available on the main accounting system. Design reports, analyze problem areas, and reconcile receipt entry into the accounting system. Respond to inquiries from the public, county departments, and taxing districts regarding functions of the treasurer's office. Record requests for money and follow procedure for direct deposit to checking accounts of taxing districts responsible for retaining records for the treasurer's office in compliance with Archives Division of Oregon Administrative Rules. Rest of it is the contact information. Does anybody have anything they want to change or amend, clarify? So I'm looking, you'll step on the mic there, Mr. Byerlin?
Steve Byerlin, something, I've been listening through this. There'd be no chance for anybody to be able to mail an application in. Because it'd be on Friday, it couldn't get here, you know, by Monday at 10:00 a.m.
So we should include that?
I would, so it'd have to be electronic response, you know? And also, I would urge you to go until five o'clock on Monday. That gives somebody an opportunity to take care of it. I don't want you to lose on those, you know, seven hours or whatever you might have lost, you know? But it is a little more fair to anybody who is looking at applying. I know if I was going to apply for something, I'd have to talk over with my wife before I did it, you know? But I just think about that, you know? I think five o'clock Monday would be probably the earliest that I would suggest, you know, so...
Thank you very much. Let's discuss that. We could have a special meeting on Tuesday. It is going to take staff a little bit of time to set up these interviews, so that's, you know, that's not a given. So I don't, again, my preference would be maybe to go to Monday at two o'clock and then set up to have the interviews on Tuesday and we could make a decision on Tuesday, which would be, let's see, be the 12th, I think, isn't it? Is that right? Okay, thank you. Part of the job requirement would be to report to work the next day. So anything else on the press release that should be considered for amendment?
I did like Chris's, you know, put that in bold letters, especially the part, you know, the dates and times and, you know, that bottom part, I guess, that bottom paragraph.
And agreed in bold also, if we have agreement, that take the sole mailing address out and make it electronic? So we're in agreement on that? Or hand deliver? The physical address is here. Staff Jesuit, what do you think?
Looks good.
So I need a motion. And it's okay if you don't repeat everything word for word. We want to make sure that we all understand exactly where we're going here. Director Rickert?
So to be clear, we're looking at Monday at five o'clock, the application deadline. Been a lot of dates and times.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock. With interviews being scheduled on Tuesday at some time.
And could we, excuse me, I'm sorry, go ahead. So could we add in the press release that interviews will be conducted immediately following the deadline on Tuesday instead of time now?
The deadline you set is Monday?
One day.
Excuse me, for the interviews, set a time for Tuesday. So they know that they've got to jump right on.
So my question is, the difference between two o'clock and five o'clock on Monday is that, I don't, I'm not...
We could start, yeah, that three hours would give staff time to set up the interviews for Tuesday instead of, that would at least give them a half a day Tuesday, yeah. I got to be in Gold Beach tomorrow.
Yeah.
Wherever they're from. Imagine we're going to have a lot of people from Agnes Supply.
And we're meeting that Wednesday already, so we're, there's an advantage of 24 hours to have another meeting and do that?
I understand where you're going, but my, my, uh... Yeah, I'd like to save that one day. And we could even introduce them that day. And then again, subject to background checks, that's how it works. Do you have anything else, Council Huddle?
Nope.
Could give us over three weeks with the current treasurer, so...
Okay, yeah.
Assuming they can start right away.
What's that?
Assuming they can start right away.
Commissioner Pash?
And again, this is what I don't understand, why this couldn't have been done two, three weeks ago and we could have had someone in place already, ready to go? And they could have given their notice at their employment, had plenty of time to do the process. This should have been done weeks ago. That's my comment.
Well, you keep saying weeks, it was just the 17th, so that's, what, 10 days?
Two weeks ago, we knew, more than two weeks ago, that Commissioner, or that past Commissioner Hanscom was not going to be the treasurer.
We couldn't do anything until we had a vacancy. We know that.
ORS, ORS 236.325.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, we can't go back. Move forward.
I thought we were. I really thought we were. You had a closing comment there. So, yeah, I think we've got a good program. I just don't want the public to think we squandered two weeks here. We couldn't do anything without a vacancy. And we've got a good plan in place and we have lots of optimism. I'm sure we're going to get some very qualified applicants. Thank you, board.
And you're misquoting what the truth is, is all I'm saying. We could have, per ORS, and I want this on the record, 236.325. We could have moved forward. Don't, you know, you shouldn't be telling the public that we couldn't. We could move forward in case there was an absence, the ORS clearly states. And if the absence didn't happen, then the other person took his office and we moved on. This could have been done weeks ago. That's all I have to say.
And I'm going to conclude with this. We can talk about your reference to 236 till we're blue in the face. We did not have a vacancy. We do now, we've immediately responded. And you made it clear on November 4th, sir, that the outgoing board should not bind the incoming board elected by the people to a decision made in 2020. So I'm not misleading the public, to the contrary. I don't tell walkers like you do. Excuse me?
Listen, I'm going to make a motion here to approve that.
Thank you.
Press release and with the changes and...
Yeah, what? What was that comment? I'm going to tell you, Commissioner, I'm not going to tolerate your continue berating me in a public meeting. That little snide comment you just did, I will not tolerate it.
You just got to say it.
You've been doing this, you've been doing it now for months.
Excuse me, no.
And you will stop doing it.
No, you're the one that just said I was misleading the public. I'm tired of you telling things that are not true.
Go back to the video and look at the video. You're acting like a six-year-old.
Oh, yeah, okay, nice comment. It's not going to work, sir.
Motion is to approve this press release with the updated times and if you need to counsel, you can read those.
I guess the date is the, what is it, A...
We need to just, we almost need a chalkboard so we could put it all out there.
So the deadline for the applications to be in is, what, 3:00, 2:00 p.m. on Monday? 2:00 p.m. on Monday, the 11th? And then interviews to be scheduled at 2:00 p.m. on the 12th?
If that's Tuesday, correct? Thank you.
And that's, and then they can be sent in electronically?
And we need to remind them that be ready to set a schedule for the Tuesday. Now, did we set a time, just verifying, for the Tuesday interview through executive session?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Can we do 10 o'clock? Maybe we could do the afternoon. What's the consensus?
I thought we had 2:00 p.m., but...
Do you recall? We're gaining. Okay, Staff Jesuit, do you know?
Sorry, everyone.
Hang on.
So the press release will say, application deadline, 2:00 p.m. Monday, January 11th, and then the interviews will be 2:00 p.m. work on Tuesday, January 12th, or 10:00 a.m. January 12th.
And Council Huddle, I'm going to ask you, what kind of time should we allow so staff to be prepared for each interview? Is 30 minutes?
Better question for Rickert or Jesuit, honestly.
Okay, what do you...
Julie Swift, your press release, Commissioner mentioned Julie Swift, she'll be involved in this process?
Certainly.
She might be getting the applications then.
Well, that is on the original press release, but we didn't, we didn't change that. We didn't amend that.
All applications should go through her. She can forward them to me and I can send them to the board for prior...
This was based on our past practice of replacing appointed or elected.
So let's set for two o'clock on Tuesday, the 12th, for the interviews. Is that okay?
Sure. Do we want to include in the application notice that we want an immediate start date? And when do we want a start date?
How would you categorize or characterize that?
Well, you would just put in must be able to start immediately or must be able to start by X date. And you guys would say what that is.
So this is all being included in your motion, Commissioner Herzog? Yeah, I agree. So how do we fill in the blanks so that we do our best job there?
I think we need to leave it open and just say for immediate...
For immediate start date?
Yeah, immediate start date. Don't put a, we don't know that the applicants who are applying, we don't know what their availability is. One might be available a week from next week, another one might be available two days from next week.
But we'll know all that in interview and that would be something we would ask.
Find all that out.
Okay. Commissioner Rhodes?
Hi. Yes, thank you, Commissioner. George Rhodes, businessperson in Brookings, Oregon. Welcome aboard.
Thanks, George.
Commissioner, glad to see you here. I would recommend that the board consider maybe, I know this is a critical issue, but it's also critical that you get the right person in the job. And you're making this sort of limited, so what if your best candidate comes in, let's say, and already has a job and can't be here for two weeks? What's the board then going to do? They're going to go to a lesser candidate? So you're assuming that whoever applies for this job is going to be available to start right away. And that's not a very good assumption, I would think, given the fact that I would want to see the best representative offered a position to do the job. So while this is critical, I think the assessor had a good point. I do know that there's assistants out there from my previous time serving on the board that can help the county through this process. And it would be who you all to consider. Haste makes waste. Be careful, do a good job of doing interviews, and get the right person for the job. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need to close this. I agree with you there, but I think taking this through Tuesday, interviews, you know... Push to charge. So we can follow through and if we don't get something, one that we are really confident in on Tuesday, the 12th, we may have to regroup. I don't think we're going to go there. And the way you, the language you used a minute ago, I thought was almost perfect. The available start date, you didn't say immediate, but you worded it well. I'd like to write that down, actually.
I think I did say immediately.
Okay.
Not to put an actual date in there, but immediately, leave it a little more open.
Okay. So we all have agreement on that, right? Go ahead, Commissioner.
The word negotiable might be a good word in there, too.
I think we'll just leave it at immediate so they, if they want to hop on board that, you know, I don't see this as haste, but I do believe we need to be on guard for that, absolutely. And we'll know more after we do the interviews. So is the motion clear for everybody? Good job. I don't see any heads no, no. You want to repeat it, can you? Staff Jesuit?
Motion by Commissioner Herzog, I don't have a second. I'd imagine...
You're not going to get a second till we get clarification, I don't think.
Well, and it's the, for the press release to run immediately and with applications to close at 2:00 p.m. on Monday, the 11th, and interviews to be conducted at 2:00 p.m. on Tuesday, the 12th. And the start date would be immediate, while pending background check.
And so noted in the updated press release to conclude the motion?
Yeah, it'll be updated press release, which can get out tonight and should make the Friday papers. And of course, it'll make the radio stations. It might even make a TV station.
Well, I commend everybody for staying with this and wrestling it out and getting it done and good day's coming. So do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Pash. John Jesuit? Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pash?
Yes?
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Next item, parliamentary procedure, you know, really what I wanted to do, there's just move forward and, you know, you can do Robert's Rules of Order, but we don't have anything specific that this board has ever adopt, excuse me, that is adopted since I've been here to be more in the interest of clarification. But, you know, we've gone the whole day, I haven't had to call a point of order, which is a good sign for 2021. So, you know, I put this more under discussion. It says action item, but I don't think we're ready to vote on that. But if we have a consensus, we can move staff in to bring in, you know, an order on this topic. I think it would be a good thing to do and I gave you information there that we could all study. We've all served on different boards, you know? This is what I did on the Marine Board, cleared back in 2002 and '03 as chairman, and it worked well. And we don't have to be hypersensitive to it, but I think it's just a good program to move forward and try and conduct our meetings as professional as we possibly can. And, yeah, go into the next year. So any discussion on that? So can we have staff, do we have an agreement? Did you have something, Commissioner Herzog?
Nope.
Okay. So we have staff agreement to bring back an order and do we want to do, do we want to do Robert's Rules of Order? I mean, that's the most customary, the most popular, the easiest to understand. Can we get that done? Mr. Pash?
I thought we were already doing Robert's Rules of Order, basically. That's what we said two years ago.
We didn't vote on it, so, and I don't know if we, I don't know if any of us, frankly, were particularly good at it, following that procedure. I'm not pointing a finger, I'm just, I'm as guilty as anyone else, but is it time or is it a benefit to this board and to the citizens to say, you know, we want to learn, we want to grow? we wanna learn, we wanna grow, we wanna move forward? Um, so to answer your question, uh, I think it needs to be highlighted, I think it needs to be updated. Commissioner Herzog?
I, I, what I've seen is that you're running under Robert's Rules right now. This is exactly the way we do it at Kuzkery Electric, the board, and, uh, it is, I've, I've been to classes for the, the co-op on, uh, and there's a, actually a really good email lady that does Jurassic Parliament, and, uh, she makes it like, uh, I don't know if you, anybody ever seen it, it's, she makes it easy to understand, 'cause it's, there is a lot to it, and, uh, but, you know, mainly, it's just being respectful and, uh, um, that's what we need to work on, gentlemen, is just, you know...
Do you have a recommendation? Do you wanna, you wanna make this a little more official?
Well, if, if, if the board has never adopted Robert's Rules of Order, I would make a motion that we adopt Robert's Rules of Order and, and, uh, and then we need to hire a, somebody from John Ward's staff to, with a taser when we get out of line to, uh, to zap us. Or if he let, lets me, he could, I would take the taser and I could, I would be the zapper, so...
So you volunteer and let us do me?
Yeah. No, hopefully it never has to come to that, but, yeah, I would make a motion that we adopt Robert's Rules of Order as a, um, board procedures.
Commissioner Pash?
If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to bring it back next week, uh, for our meeting, so I can review the Robert's Rules of Order again, and then we can vote on it next week, that'd be great.
That's fine with me.
Uh, I'm gonna second your motion, just so we don't load up on, uh, any additional, it's, as we can read it between now and then, and it'll be a good incentive before the next meeting, so I second that motion, motion unless you decide to withdraw, and I'd get it done today.
Let's, let's withdraw till next week.
Okay.
That's my...
Or we could approve it now and then put it on the consent agenda, and if there's an issue with the Rules of Order, then we could remove it from the consent agenda.
I'm fine with that.
That makes it easier?
Completely start your motion over again, I think I'm, I'm in agreement with that recommendation.
All right. So move the first motion.
Back to the first motion.
Let's back to the...
I'll second that.
I don't think that's proper Rules of Order, but anyway...
But we're gonna put it on the consent agenda for approval at that point.
That sounds good.
Okay.
As amended.
I'll, I'll, I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Roll call, Mr. Jesuit.
Commissioner Pash?
All right.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
This is a tough one, no.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, quickly moving on to proposal for agenda sequence, uh, do you have that in front of you by chance, Commissioner Herzog?
Yeah.
You do, okay. Um, how much time you wanna spend on this? I think that... Sorry. It's okay. Um, this is also moving us into 2021, the red, um, are the, uh, recommendations, uh, gives the commissioners a maximum of three minutes beginning of the meeting. Uh, the only thing I would change on that, uh, is consider putting public comments, uh, as number three. That way, if, if people are in a tight time schedule, and sometimes, too, number five, the agenda amendment changes tend to drag on, it just depends. So in the interest of, uh, respecting the public's time, um, that would be the only thing I review, reviewing this a second time or third time, whatever, was really consider having the public comments, uh, just prior to the commissioner comments, which is not the same as commissioner updates, uh, towards the end of the meeting. So I'm looking for discussion here.
My hand is up, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Pash?
Um, I don't know if we need to make commissioner comments in the beginning of a meeting, that's just my opinion, our, our updates and reports at the end of the meeting, um, I think are, are pretty broad, and we can, we can, you know, at that point, discuss anything. I think the latitude that I allowed, since I've been commissioner, on any commissioner comments could be, remain, um, as with yourself as board chair, to allow that latitude to discuss anything. Um, so I don't know why we would need to be redundant, um, in having commissioner comments in the beginning. I do agree that public comments need to stay at the beginning of a meeting. Um, we've got handicapped that have to come here, we've got people that have other things to plan their day, um, so if we put those comments near the end of the meeting, our main, they don't know how long they're gonna have to sit here before they can make their comments, at least, um, leaving it in the beginning of the meeting, the public knows about what time they're going to be required to be here. Uh, as far as, um, conflicts, I mean, if, if any of us have a conflict, we can announce that, um, on the discussion item, I, I don't know if we need to give a, a conflict, and, uh, I mean, that's, that's probably minimal. The other question I would have is financial reports. We do a quarterly financial report now. Uh, I think the burden that that would put on staff, on our limited staff, um, and again, uh, with the treasurer's situation, the way it is, especially currently, um, I'm afraid that a lot of the treasurer duties could fall onto the finance department if you have a treasurer that is not qualified or fully up to speed on that position. Finance is going to be pushed on to push a lot of their, uh, the, the normal treasurer things through their department, so to put the additional financial report on, at a minimum, I would ask you to bring this back in a quarter, uh, or in, you know, in, in our physical year 21, '22, um, because this is gonna be a burden on our finance department, learning the new software programs, the possible treasurer issues, the reporting that they currently have to do now. We're in the middle of a final audit on another year to put the additional stress on the finance department, and learning a new software program on top of it, um, is, it's just, to me, is not necessary when we're gonna have a, a report in another, um, two or three weeks anyway, on where we are now, so...
Commissioner Rickard? Uh, I'm sorry, Director Rickard?
Um, I, I would have to agree with Commissioner Pash on the financial reports, um, it, it will put an undue burden on, um, current limited finance staff. Um, I, I've also never worked at a place where we've done, where we've reported financials, um, twice a month, quarterly is, is very standard, and, and I think, um, it is very sufficient in getting, um, the word out to commissioners as well as to the public. Additionally, with, um, Open Gov software, that all of that information will be at, at your fingertips, uh, and possibly even, um, posted on, on the website to the public.
Thank you. Did you have anything?
I, I, I'm in agreement, I, um, if we see it every quarter, that's fine, and I'm definitely in agreement of moving the, uh, public comments to the, you know, s- third, second, you know? They can stay as long as they want, but if they, if, if you wanna come and make a comment and leave, that I think we should be, um, accommodating there, so...
Thank you, Commissioner Herzog. Well, let's start with, um, let's start with commissioner comments. Originally, I had two to four minutes, and I said, uh, just three minutes. Um, I think it's absolutely imperative that we talk to the people that are paying our salaries, and we're all on full salary, we're costing the taxpayers a lot of money, uh, you know, it's been an issue, who's working full-time, who isn't working full-time, who relies on the Director of Operations or the County Administrator to do their work, um, who's actually out hustling, getting work done, who isn't? Uh, not pointing a finger at anyone. Um, but we have a obligation, is that, who, did you wanna speak now? Who, who, who just spoke? Okay, no? I'd, I'd appreciate if you wouldn't comment during the meeting, if you wanna fail another slip, slip, I'll be glad to consider. So, uh, we have people that are counting on us to make some really tough decisions, and so, uh, the comments to open up, uh, with everything that we're dealing with, that's where I just seem to have so much, I've been here four years, and I've seen two different boards come and go, and, um, I've seen the amount of money that's been squandered. It's factual, it's easy to follow, it's undeniable, it's been a tremendous waste, both boards, and, uh, you know, part of the reason the finance people right now are under the tremendous burden that I just heard, uh, is because of the new software system that I voted against. Please wait a few months, hold off on this tremendous expense. I'm not done, thank you. Um, so I'm hearing you're just gonna do all the work for us, okay? Uh, can we afford it? That's another question. Um, you know, I originally voted for it in the beginning, 'cause I was convinced, and then I saw, uh, one public comment was, it's gonna cost you $200,000 each of the next four years, give or take. Um, so, public comments, I think we're all in agreement on that, amended gen, agenda amendments. Any other board I've ever served on wanna direct challenge to any board member if they had, does Kuzkery have, have that, if, as a, as a agenda topic that basically says, this is your chance right now to declare a possible conflict of interest? Do they have that on their, their meeting agendas?
No.
Okay. Um, I see it on a lot of others, so, uh, I might be losing on that one. Um, the, uh, the financial report is probably the biggest one.
Excuse me, Court?
Huh? Excuse me?
Chair? You know, the, every, all, all board members need to know, you know, they'll, you're, uh, just cognizant of where, you know, you, if you feel like there's a conflict of interest, you declare that right up front, I would, you know what I mean? So, um, I don't think it needs to be a...
Okay. Um, on the financial report, I honestly don't know where the county is right now, and I, that's where the burden is. Uh, we've got, uh, we've had a very tough year, we're not exactly sure what's gonna happen for 2021. A short, to the point, Director of Finance, financial report, I think is critical, uh, twice a week, excuse me, I'm sorry, twice a month, I think makes a lot of sense, and, uh, you know, the, the, the report we had last meeting, I think it was on the 23rd, uh, was very helpful, uh, Mr. Rickard brought in his staff, and, uh, it was, it was, uh, it was just good business. Waiting every quarter with the county finances where they are, that's a struggle for me. That is a real struggle, until we tie up a lot of loose ends. So, uh, I don't wanna wait a month from now with the transition between the, the two Director of Operations, with, uh, a new finance person coming on, a new system, I don't wanna wait until a month or two, and then have somebody go, well, we didn't factor that in, we couldn't factor that in, we don't know where we are, um, and I'm not sending out a yellow blinking light, but I do wanna be responsible and make sure that I'm getting the updated information, as is the public. So I'm gonna come to you here in just a minute, um, the rest of, I, I might have to bring this back another time, because it's, apparently, we don't have a lot of, uh, agreement on just, uh, bringing this system up to date, and as Chair, I would, uh, I would love that opportunity. So, Mr. Rickard, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to point out that if the, our Open Gov does place a, a burden on staff, but it's no more of a burden than any other, than, than an audit, or, or anything else that may come up, um, it's, um, you don't, you don't not do an audit just because it's a burden, and you don't not do, um, Open Gov just because it's a burden, it's, it's going to help the county, it's going to help improve visibility, um, where, between, um, us and, and, and the public, and so that is a, a burden that, that, um, that, that we're, that we are taking on for the betterment of the county. Um, additionally, again, financial reporting every, tw- twice a month, I don't, I, I don't see that there's gonna be so many changes in a two-week period that it's, that it's worth reporting on. Um, the, uh, quarterly reports will be a lot more beneficial and, and inclusive than, than, um, reports every other week.
So, um, oh, sorry, excuse me, Commissioner Pash?
I would also like to perhaps help, Mr. Commissioner Herzog, to understand, uh, the software program that we've put in, is Open Gov. Um, it is a modern software program, and they tell us, of course, we haven't seen yet, I believe the go-live, part of it goes live, actually, today, as we speak, it is going live. Um, so what they tell us it will do, and what I've seen in some of the classes that I've attended, um, is that it will be at each commissioner's fingertips, on your laptop, uh, in your office, you will be able to go in and look at the budget, all facets of the buzzet, budget. Um, it batches every night at close of business, so the next morning, anything that we've done from that day previous will be batched, and you will be able to look at the current state of the budget up to date, uh, at your fingertips daily. Each department head will have control of their budgets, they can make changes to their budgets, and then submit them to finance, um, and then that would come before the board, before they could actually make those changes, but they could move things around in their budgets, and we are also told that a lot of the reporting from those budgets will also go online, we could put that active on our website, so that, as Chair Boyce has said, he wants full transparency for the county, um, the, the actual budget would be online and updated on a daily basis for, and I think, so there, there is a good reason not to burden the finance department with coming up with this, when in a, in a few weeks after they work the bugs of this out, we will all have this at our fingertips, and I would, I would hope that the board would wait on this at least to, uh, to let's see how Open Gov sets in, and then, uh, with our financial report coming in our next meeting, is it? I'm not sure, it's in the next couple of weeks, uh, finance will give a complete financial state of the county, um, so we'll have that, and, and then we can go forward with that from Open Gov, with Open Gov. I would also like to say, if I could, this board voted last year, as our assessor came to us and asked for a, a increase in his budget for a new software program. At times, we need to update our software, so, um, I'm sure the assessor did it in hopes that it would expedite his office, how he runs his office, how he collects and disperses his tax, uh, revenues. It takes time to learn that, yes, but I would hope that, you know, this board would see that it is, uh, it's a progression that was necessary, and it will be very fruitful to the county. That's all I have, sir.
Yeah, my, my only comment, comment there is that we had other options that were far less expensive. Uh, if this works, and it very well could, great days ahead, but it is tremendously costly, and when you couple it with, uh, everything else that we've been dealing with, uh, you know, I've got a list here of, my goodness, of, uh, the, the different surprises that we've got, um, you know, and right now, we're looking at, uh, needing to appoint two new board men, Budget Committee board members. Um, what I'm hearing from the board is their preference would be to wait till perhaps the middle of March for our next financial report, um, that, that's just, uh, that's too long for me, because of all the variables. We have an excellent crew, they are catching up, they are completely, they're helping to complete the audits, uh, I think mixed, Director Rickard is, uh, spread way thin, uh, with two different jobs we have him on, and, uh, you know, we have employees that are, have confused, uh, issues on their paychecks, uh, that we're not addressing, and he doesn't have time to address, um, so, uh, I just have some concerns out there, and just having somebody get up that's responsible and say, hey, this is where we are bi-weekly, uh, we've got this issue that we didn't anticipate, uh, et cetera, so we can go, uh, here's how we can address that, here's what the board needs to know. So wait till March, uh, I, I'm surprised that we would wanna do that. That's all I have. Chair?
Can I make a recommendation on this, uh, the agenda thing that you put out? I think we need to get rid of three, four, and put public comments up at number three, and put presentations up to number four. A lot of times that we come over and we do presentations for...
Yes.
Um, it just wastes our time to sit here through all the ammen, what takes so long is the agenda amendments thing, it prob, is an issue. My, my, uh, recommendation is you put agenda amendments right before consent agenda, that way, you're right in the meat of everything. And let everything else go prior to that, if that makes sense.
Hey, I think I might bring it back in a month or so, with, with everything that I've learned here today, I think that might be, we can refine it, and, uh, I think that's a good, uh, good recommendation. Anybody else from the public? Okay, so, um, can I get a consensus from the board that, uh, maybe we'll bring this back in a month or so, and we have more time with the recommended changes or, uh, ideas there? a month or so and we have more time with the recommended changes or ideas there?
It was, it was your, it was your AGRS, so, yeah, if you want to, I'd be fine with that.
Mr. Herzog?
But I would, I would kind of make a motion right now to move stuff, you know, move the public comments to number three, like John has suggested. Sheriff Ward, I apologize for not being.
It's okay, John.
You know, I.
I didn't say anything.
So I would like to see some of those changes, you know, starting at our next, our meeting on Wednesday, if that's, you know, moving the presentations to number four. I really like John's, Sheriff Ward's comments and so, is that a possibility to do that prior to?
Just, go ahead.
I don't, I don't have a regular agenda in front of me right now, but I think that's fairly close to what, what we generally do.
Oh, okay. Right.
And maybe I can get you that agenda.
Well, that's this one, right? Yeah, I got that.
So I want to make sure the board, if I may, the board does not agree that we need even monthly financial reports, we just need to do quarterly?
Well, what I heard was we will have daily. And Brad, can you expound on that, is, timing-wise or?
Yeah, timing, we just went live on, on the AP and GL functions of the software this morning. We're going to be bringing different modules online over the next six months. Reporting will be one of the last ones that we do because we need to get everything up and running first. But, but that will come later this year.
Well, I'm kind of used to monthly, you know, that's what we do at Kuzcure Electric, but it's a, it's a different deal, but monthly, we have a monthly financial report, so.
I'm going to recommend that we bring this back on the 13th. I don't know staff right now with all that they've got to do. We would want to, I can work on this and get it back to Mr. Rickert and Mr. Jesuit, but I would recommend the 13th, I think. So we can just keep the old agenda as it is for now. But I'm open. I'm open. We spent quite a bit of time on it, it's 20 minutes to noon, so I'll bring it back one of those two days for potential board approval.
Okay.
Thank you. So now we're talking about, are we on to the censor? So Commissioner Herzog, what, did you have some questions on that or, I can go with the four things that, that are included in this, in this documentation. I promise this citizen's is valid and legitimate, accurate. But the four things are the response to the Campos Meekans to move to space 18 for the winter protection at Boyce Co Park. You haven't had a chance to review this yet, I understand.
A little, not.
Okay. Meekans preliminary response to the Boyce Co camp host eviction and the Curry staff accusation to break in the contract with the county. I did number three, records of properly contacting new interim Curry Director of Operations, Rickert of Sunday Water Lake East with Boyce Co Park. Why the Curry County Parks Coordinator was not contacted. Number four, highlighted items, Curry County personnel rule is requiring doctor's release for special ADA health matters while at the same time respecting HIPAA guidelines. So it's all here and it's a lot of information, but if somebody really wants to know if that censor was appropriate and valid and the things that were said to CIS insurance and the black eye that give this county, anybody can make assumptions that I acted improperly and if I had it to do again, I absolutely would do exactly the same thing. The records are clear that I went through proper channels to get them to move to space 18. I've never been impolite or disrespectful to anyone indeterminate if they had a proper doctor's medical release. I stand firm on how that family, how that couple was treated from the very beginning and, you know, it's, again, it's all there. And so, sure, I'd like to start off the year with a recognition that at least the board could suggest or accept that it was, you know, a reasonable situation at the time. It caused a lot of strife in our county, it caused a lot of stuff, conflict between you and I, Commissioner Pash, and I'm shocked that we're still talking about this. So no, I want it reversed. I think it's the best thing for the county. Again, the facts speak for themselves and it's been a political decision that's just been brutal and it's cost me a lot of time and it's, it's very, very unfortunate. When I say political, yeah, there's people out there that want it to be true, that absolutely say, yeah, what a jerk, you know, all the rest of it. But I think the most of people in this room, if they really knew it happened, they would have responded the same way on these issues. So I'm going to be here for the next four years and this censor is, is really a black eye for this county. Other counties don't work this way. And this meeting was set up to, the censor was set up with discussion prior with two commissioners that's completely illegal. It wasn't properly noticed. It was not on the agenda and this is our chance to say, yeah, Commissioner Boyce has been a productive, hard-working commissioner. He cared about those people up there, he had no other option and it's all right here. If you want to take the time to read it, it's all right here, then you will vote to overturn this. It's the right thing to do. It was a horrible.